Alright. I call the order of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Makiki Moore, Punchbowl, Tantlas, neighboring board, regular meeting. Um, first, uh, the agenda is the city and county Honolulu monthly reports. We're gonna start off with the Honolulu Fire Department. Representative from the Fire Department. Okay, see, Don, I just wanna see, um, Insta.
Captain Moore is on the claw, um, Chair Ross. Not sure if he's able to hear you.
Okay. Well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna skip ahead to, uh, HDB and I'll come back in a moment. So, uh, we just want to share a report from the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Segusio, representing the Honolulu Police Department District One. Um, other than the specific stats I'm gonna be providing you guys tonight, um, you can go to our public website, www.honolulupd.org, uh, to see any other particular statistics that you guys are interested in. Uh, so I'm just gonna go right into it. Motor vehicle thefts for this month of March was fourteen, previous month was sixteen. Burglaries were five, previous was seven, thefts forty-two, previous thirty-three. Uh, UMVs or car break-ins were fifteen, uh, previous to that was eighteen, assaults were nine, uh, previous to that was ten. Sex assault was one, previous to that was two, uh, graffiti cases for this month was zero, previous was two. Drug offenses were four, previous month was seven. So total cost for service for your particular area was two thousand three hundred and ten, uh, compared to the previous month, uh, two thousand one hundred and twenty-three. So at this point in time, there's no criminal breaches to report, uh, so safety tip for this month is gonna be distracted driving. Uh, there's a real big push, uh, in regards to this. Uh, we were asking our community members just to put their cell phones down and be more attentive of their surroundings. Uh, spring has arrived, so there's more construction going on and more pedestrians out and about. So please drive with due care and other distractions that are kinda notable are also like eating while you're driving or like listening to loud music. Uh, so I just, uh, another thing that I wanted to touch bases on. Uh, I know there was several questions last week in regards to speeding and racing on the highways. Uh, so I made notifications to the traffic division and, um, they're conducting operations. Hopefully, we can make some arrests of these motorcyclists that are racing on the freeway. Um, but obviously, it's kind of difficult to get them to stop. But, um, hopefully, we're gonna start initi- uh, initiating, uh, operations, uh, that will result in more citations and possibly some arrests of these people. Other than that, I'm gonna give back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board and the public attendees.
Great, thank you so much. I'm gonna open up to you questions from the board first. Any attendees in person have any questions at this time?
In fact, the board members. Richard, please go ahead. Sorry, I can't answer. Uh, the other day, I'm coming up, moving a little forward, sport out, right past Pensacola. This SUV pulls out in front of me, there's twenty-one lane seat. And then this guy comes and they start talking. So I, so I started talking my horn. Turns out, it's a police car as I pull around. He didn't have his blue light on and I went, I'm gonna stall the car, he's in that SUV, I didn't notice anything. So yeah, uh, we still, officers said, keep their mics on. Now, for second, I thought I was gonna get the phone from beating this guy, beating this, talking to this friend or something. Heard of being an officer.
Yeah, I apologize. The, the audio is pretty bad. Um, I got, I got the part about, um, officer, no blue light on, Pensacola, Luna, Lilo. Uh, what was the issue in regards to the officer? I apologize.
Alright, thank you. For two, one more time. Can you say one more time? I think you got.
Sorry, I.
I didn't know.
Sorry, buddy. I couldn't hear any audio.
Captain Moore, we'll come back to you in just a little bit. We appreciate you being here. Okay, any other questions from, uh, in-person, um, board members for HPD at this time? Um, okay, let's check if there's anyone who is online. Do you see any hands up for board members? Okay, Dan, I have a small.
I'm a board member who had my hand up.
Oh, okay. You recognized at this time, Carson.
I couldn't hear a thing that Richard was saying. There was something wrong with the audio. I think that's what Lieutenant Segusio was trying to say.
Yeah, we, we got that. Thank you very much. But is there something, you had a question for the officer?
No, I just. Uh, no.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, we're going to, uh, move on to questions from other attendees. Would you like to start us out? Please stand up, say your name and speak loudly in this direction.
Hello, my name is, uh, Mr. Chung. And I'm a community member here concerned about fifteen oh six P E Koi, the shelter there. So my question is to the HPD officer is that would you like, um, to know about two things? One, an outsized number of calls to that facility compared to an ordinary apartment building? And two, would you support working with private security hired by the management company?
So in regards to fifteen oh six P Koi, um, we do often get a lot of calls from that one location. Uh, obviously, there's, um, how can I explain this? There's particular people that continuously call throughout the night. Um, some, sometimes I think it's, um, they just need to talk to somebody. Uh, sometimes it's some sort of, uh, mental issue. Uh, so we go to and we service every single call. Uh, however, these calls are getting kind of, uh, becoming a nuisance. So working with private security would be, um, actually fantastic. Um, we often work with private security in particular areas. I'll give you a perfect example, Alamoana Shopping Center, we work very closely with their security. Uh, we try to, um, you know, mimic each other's work and help them do theirs as well as do ours. So yeah, private security at that location would actually be a great help, uh, in regards to, um, you know, particular people wanting, you know, um, needing services at that location, because sometimes the, the cost for service is, uh, due to, uh, noise complaints of, uh, adjacent neighbors. However, when we get to the location, uh, it's pretty quiet. Usually, we get these calls two, three o'clock in the morning, uh, pretty, pretty, uh, regularly.
Do we have any other questions? Please go ahead, Sam.
This building is a low-rent, uh, housing project. And we, this, the state or the city needs to look at getting a security guard. It's been a problem in the area for years and years. Since they opened, this was the old school before.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I've noticed that the police officers in this district are staying in the graveyard, Makiki graveyard. They, they leave, pretty much stay there for an hour and a half. I don't know if they're doing reports or whatever, but it'd be nice, instead of being in the graveyard where there's nobody there and there's no crime, that they station themselves in that area, which is the most high-crime area in Makiki. Just a suggestion.
Uh, fantastic suggestion. Um, uh, my officers, sometimes they particularly, um, hang out at, uh, locations where there's great wifi. So, uh, Captain Larry, uh, his, his firehouse right there, um, is a good location. Sometimes they, they park in front, uh, when they're submitting reports so that we get, um, great wifi. Uh, in regards to the, the, the cemetery over there off of Pensacola, uh, it is a high-crime area. So we do often get calls of people being inside of the cemetery doing, uh, God knows what. So, uh, so maybe on those days that you had particularly had seen those officers, they were trying to, uh, address that, um, issue at that, uh, cemetery. So I, I'll speak with my officers, I'll have them, uh, maybe, uh, you know, keep that fifteen oh six location in mind so they can park in front of there also.
Uh, Rich, please go up.
Uh, Richard Cassidy.
One second. Officer, can you, uh, can you hear Rich?
Okay, Richard Cassidy. Um, so I live on Green Street and, uh, the corner of Green and Ernest, uh, they just built that new, uh, affordable unit, uh, building. And, uh, since they don't have any parking there, the parking is just horrendous. Uh, that whole area has been cluttered. I mean, I just left right now and had a hard time getting out of my driveway. Um, we've, several of the neighbors have made attempts to call police and try to give them tickets, you know, and it's hit and miss because you guys are busy. But, uh, I know that, uh, at one point, they tried to put some signs up. I know City County came down, they put a couple of signs that said, no parking. And they're ripping the signs off the building and I'm not sure how we can kind of push that to say, you know, maybe concrete, you know, uh, I don't know, need to do that if the City County claim no parking or at least, um, having that being, uh, addressed, but definitely with the police being, uh, more presence in that area, we've had major crime. Just last week, I don't know if people are aware about the, um, you know, these five guys came and they put their hoods on and they actually have rushed the building. They're banging on the building and trying to, uh, get into one of the buildings. You know, the police showed up after the fact. But, I mean, the crime has gotten extensive with that Ernest, uh, you know, and it's supposed to be affordable. But it seems like they're putting a lot of people that are not in that bracket that may be like, um, I don't know what it's called, like, uh, catch and ate or other practice, but it's definitely a crime environment now. And I've been there twenty-something years and the last six months have just been horrendous of the amount of, you know, cars being parked everywhere. I know that, uh, party, I mean, uh, the fire hydrant, they've been, a couple of cars got towed, but they still leave the cars there. If a police officer goes there right now, they'll see that whole corner just flooded with cars. Just, you can't even get around that area. The, the sidewalks are blocked. So I just wanted to see who, who would be the one to be able to, um, do something, like, put signs up or have more police in that area, but it's definitely, I mean, I'm just shocked how this apartment is being addressed, you know, and I, I, I'm not sure if you folks have been aware of that fourteen twenty-seven, uh, said Ernest Street, but it's still that corner. Has that been part of that crime, like, you know, being picked up and stuff? But I just wanted to see if I can make that aware, you know, for you folks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go and take, Richard, we'll, we'll go and take a look at that location. Um, let me go look at the signs. I haven't driven up there uh, in a minute, so let me go just verify the signs in regards to the parking. I know we, we were getting calls in regards to parking around that one particular corner coming down on Ernest Street. Um, so, um, let me go look at the signs, uh, to determine, uh, if, if we need to get any, uh, DFM, uh, people in order to put up those new signs. But just realize this, yeah, on Makiki, uh, parking is of a premium. So obviously, if we drive around tonight, we could possibly, you know, expend several tag books, yeah, in regards to, uh, parking violations, yeah? But just realize this, right? I mean, most park apartments only offer one stall, um, so a lot of people have to park on the streets. Now, is a lot of officer discretion utilized? Absolutely, because if you go over there, we get a complaint, we're gonna tag every single vehicle on that street in regards to any type of violation, yeah? We're not gonna take, we're not gonna say, oh, we're not gonna tag this car because this guy lives over here. If it's in violation, we're gonna be citing it. So continue to call if there's any vehicles in violation. We're gonna come down and we're gonna, um, regulate on that one particular street at a time, yeah? So just continue to call, Richard.
And what about the, the crime? The crime, uh, you know, having, you know, that kind of, I mean, people are calling, but then it's still like, it's, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just getting pretty, shopping carts are getting left there.
So the, so the question is, what, how, what should the community response do to the increases in crime and your estimation?
Continue to call, continue to call when you see a crime occur and be a willing participant in regards to the investigation, yeah? A lot of the times, we get calls for service, we go to the location, we do find possible suspects, but we have no person, um, trying to meet up with the officers to tell us exactly what happened or even provide us a statement. So you know how many calls, uh, we receive on a particular night where we end up just making a misspob, just documenting the incident, uh, putting these particular persons info on, on a report, but there's no crime because we have no, uh, person or witness, right? Obviously, we cannot be everywhere, right? And with that, that's why we're trying to build, um, partnerships with the community. And we just need to get our community members more involved in being witnesses and being willing to, uh, continue on the investigation so that we can prosecute these criminals. Uh, in regards to the crime, um, getting, getting worse, it's, 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 um, it's getting worse on particular days and in some days, there's not, not so much. Uh, but I think on those particular days that you've been noticing, um, you know, it's happening in your location. But just like I said, if you see a crime occurring or possibly something's gonna go, um, you know, awry, continue to give us a call, let us go out there and make the assessment and then we'll see if we, um, uh, need to make a case or, 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 you know, criminal investigation.
All right, are there any other questions from other attendees? Please go ahead.
Just, Lieutenant, should people be using the Honolulu three-one-one app to report the passing of things?
Three questions.
Very good question. So absolutely, continue to use, use the three-one-one app. Um, I don't know how other districts are utilizing that three-one-one app, but when we get those notifications down to the officers, I personally send them out to the sector sergeants who then in turn send it to the particular beat officers. Uh, they usually make checks, um, or address the, 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 the issue. And then we always put a response in our, our, our complaint logs. And then at the end of the, the, the survey period, uh, our, our district secretary goes and sends back a response to the original, uh, sender, yeah? So, continue to call.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Uh, we have someone who's been waiting a while as well. Uh, it took it out slightly out of order, sorry about that. Um, did, did, you feel like you answered your question, Richard? Um, before we move on that, I wanted to check that. Uh, Janelle, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Um, thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. Um, I apologize, everybody, I'm a little sick, so hopefully you guys can hear me. Um, I just wanna say, um, I think HPD has been doing an exceptional job in the Makiki area. Um, though there have been, um, some instances where, uh, there's an increasing crime in the area, um, with the limited amount of police presence, um, as for officers um, in the district, you know, uh, I think you guys are doing an excellent job. Um, I'm actually really surprised at how fast, um, you guys quickly cleaned up the P Koi and Luna Lilo, um, uh, biaduct area. Uh, because I noticed that there's not anybody that's staying there. Now, if they've migrated to another section, um, I apologize to any of our neighbors. Um, but I think we, we need to give an applause to the, the HPD officers, uh, regardless if they're standing by in an area. Um, I think any police presence, um, even if it is by a graveyard or any other location, really helps to build the, um, the community in a, a safe manner, rather than, um, they're not doing something. Because at the end of the day, they are actually closer by, um, within our district and they don't technically need to because, um, it, it, don't get me wrong, Lieutenant, um, the district is pretty large, isn't it? It doesn't just include Makiki and Manoa and Lower Punchbowl and Tantlas. Um, it also includes Alamoana and parts of Kai Maki, doesn't it? I mean, so, so, you know, we can't be just concerned with the, the um, concerns in our area, but I, I guess at the end of the day, um, there has, to my opinion, uh, been a decrease in certain areas. Now, the mitigation with the, the parking situations, it is at a premium. You know, and.
Your point is well taken. Would you be able to summarize the question?
Um, I just wanna, there was more of a comment, Chair Ross. Um, I, I want us to be able to make sure that people understood that, you know, HPD is doing their job, so I apologize for taking the time. Thank you.
Don't, don't apologize for taking up time. Um, uh, we also have Elizabeth with a question. Alright, I don't believe Elizabeth's hand is up. So I'm gonna move on with, uh, one question of my own. Uh, this is slightly outside of our neighborhood board area, but I heard from a resident at, um, eleven-ten Villa Lane, that there's just a lot of activity related from, uh, people experiencing homelessness in the area and criminal activity. It includes a lot of people's driveways and outside of homes, uh, being used essentially as toilets. Uh, there's cases of them breaking into homes. Uh, one resident of the area said she was like showering and someone just came in her home and started taking things. And there's been a lot of activity there and like we're hearing, people do call nine-one-one. Uh, it takes some time for people to get there. But it seems like because there's almost no tops on the block, so to speak, in that area, there's just a lot of disorder. And the simple request there is when people, officers are coming up and down Young Street in South Baritania, if they can just occasionally go down that lane, uh, just have any sort of presence, uh, the residents of that area would really appreciate it.
Absolutely, Chair Ross. I'll pass that on to Sergeant Daniel Cunningham so we can address it on the next SPO SNO, uh, cleanup.
Thank you so much. Just really appreciate it. Okay, uh, seeing no other questions or comments at this time. Thank you so much for being here. We'll, uh, see you again next month.
You guys have a great day.
Thank you. On that note, we'll go back to the Honolulu, uh, Fire Department.
Thank you. Uh, sorry about that. I, um, I, my speakers and my, uh, computer had a little bit of an issue there. It took me a while to figure out. And then realized the meeting even started. I was just kinda sitting here, uh, uh, trying to figure out what's going on. Anyway, uh, thank you very much for being patient. Um, so for the month of March, Makiki Fire Truck Engine Number Three responded to one structure fire, one wild man or brush fire, uh, four nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and we responded to thirteen activated fire alarms where no fire was present. Uh, we also responded to one hundred and fifty-two medical emergencies and one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian and five motor vehicle collisions. Uh, the safety tip of the month involves evacuation planning. Have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood due to an emergency. Visit fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Uh, leave early enough to avoid being caught in fire, smoke or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relative's house, a low-risk area or a shelter or evacuation center. Take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. That's it.
Alright, thank you very much, Captain Moore. I'm gonna open up to questions from board members first. Usually, I wait till the end, but I'm just gonna ask what I think is on a lot of people's minds. Can you give us an update on that Pensacola home, which I understand was on fire again today?
Uh, as far as the Fire Department goes, um, we, um, I don't think we're really in an active loop until something actually ends up burning. Uh, my understanding will.
I believe it was on fire today. It was shared on, uh, social media.
Uh, actually, it was yesterday.
Oh, it was yesterday, okay.
It was yesterday, yes. Uh, and, um, I mean, you know, other than that, uh, that's kind of, uh, the Fire Department's involvement at this point. I understand that there's been action to take over the property, but, um, from the Fire Department's, uh, vantage point, I don't have much to add.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Captain Moore. I'm gonna open up to questions from board members. Claire, you're first.
Chair Ross. Does HFD still have, um, community education team that goes out and uh, educates people, condos and stuff for fire safety and evacuation plan?
Yes, yes, uh, there's an entire community relations office, uh, that has an education section that takes care of that over at, uh, the HFP headquarters. Uh, the information can be, uh, found on the, um, Honolulu, uh, Fire Department, uh, webpage on, uh, let's see, where, where is it? Uh, sorry, fire.honolulu.gov.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Janelle, did you have another question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair Ross. Um, thank you, Captain Moore. Um, in regards to your report, um, for this past month, um, I know my apartment building was probably maybe two or three times called for, uh, false alarm. How do we mitigate the situation where you guys are coming out to a false alarm, um, fire call? Um, because sometimes you guys come at like late night and I'm like, oh god. And then our alarms start going off. So, like, is there a way that the buildings or, um, the community can be more proactive?
Um, as far as, um, false alarms, there are many reasons why an alarm system could, uh, activate, uh, when there is no fire present. Uh, sometimes you go there and you can kinda tell somebody just ended up kind of, uh, smoking their detector. They had no idea and set off the alarm and they normally kinda dig out. Uh, one time, we went to one where somebody, I don't know if they were trying to do some kind of blessing or something, but they went through the hallway with, uh, I think it was sage, uh, smoking sage or something. Uh, we found that through, uh, security footage on the vid, uh, the building. More often than not, it is due to, um, a malfunction in the system or reacting to either weather issues. Lately, we've had a lot of rain and high wind and that tends to activate a lot of, uh, fire alarm systems. And sometimes it's malfunctions that can even include, uh, bugs crossing over and short-circuiting certain systems. Uh, best way to stay on that is just to have your fire alarm company that, uh, services the alarm system to do regular checks on the system.
Thank you, Captain Moore.
No trouble.
Uh, next up, we have Paul Clink.
Um, aloha, thank you, Chair. Um, two quick things. One is, the redcross.org has an amazing resource for people to put together what's called go-bags in case of an emergency that every member of the family can participate in certain toys, your medicines, and just a lot of other things you wouldn't think of that you'd need if you went to a shelter. Having managed many shelters for many disasters all over the world, those go-bags are just amazingly helpful for people when they're coming in. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, does the Fire Department get notified? Kunaho School did a drill the other day and I'm the president of the condo association here in my building and dozens of us were freaking out. It, it was a huge alarm system that went off. It sounded, sort of sounded like even it was like the, the, uh, governmental alarm, but it wasn't. It was Kunaho and then they were telling people to go to their classrooms and lock in place. Do they inform the Fire Department? And if they do, could you remind them to maybe send out either a postcard or an email broadcast to the local neighbors? Because people in all our buildings were running down to the street and looking out, opening their eyes and try to figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, no trouble. I, I was not aware of that, uh, drill. Um, what day was that?
I wanna say it was three days ago. Um, wait, couldn't have been, what? Yeah, Monday, I think.
Monday, okay. Uh, yeah, um.
I called over there and they said it was just a drill. I'm like, you just scared the bejesus out of everybody in the neighborhood. I mean, we didn't know what was going on.
The Fire Department does have, uh, what they call an emu line, uh, for our fire dispatch center, uh, just to make our dispatchers aware of any issues that can be, uh, perceived as an emergency that's not actually an emergency, such as people making an emu, uh, you know, people see the smoke and get a lot of calls for that. Um, I would recommend, uh, that being utilized in that situation, however, I don't know if Kunaho actually called, uh, still let us know. I am, I'm unaware of that.
Do you have that number? I can call over and talk to my contact and give it to them, or I can look it up, I guess. It's called the emu line. Brilliant name.
I believe it's seven-two-three-fire. Uh, F-I-R-E.
Yes, sir. Thanks for everything you guys do, your lifesavers.
Do we have any other hands up? Alright, yes, please go ahead, Richard. And then after, Richard, we're gonna open up to the broader audience.
Uh, Chair, I can't, just real quick, I'd like to have a solid evacuation plan for us.
For this board?
This board, this gathering, rally point, uh, some type of roster, so if there is a serious fire and we're not sure that somebody is stuck up here, no. So yeah, and there's only exit we have is that, that stairs over there.
That's true. It's my backup exit.
Yeah.
Um, so on that, I, that's a very interesting idea. I think there's a number of safety concerns and the NCO knows, there's discussions from other boards recently that I don't wanna bring up just yet, but we'll be talking about more later. So maybe we can talk about a more integrated, uh, sort of emergency plan for our board meetings in your future. Would you like them as an agenda item next month?
Sounds good.
Okay. Alright. Uh, any other questions from other attendees at this time? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much for your report. We'll see you again next month.
Okay. Take care.
All right. We're gonna move on to Board of Water Supply.
Aloha, everyone. Good evening. Um, sorry, I am at an event, but we have a short and sweet report for you this month. Um, there, I have no main breaks to report. Our general water message is just a reminder that we're going into the dry season. We're expecting, um, a pretty tough dry season, so we hope everybody keeps water conservation at the top of their mind. And we're just, um, finishing up detect the leak week. So, uh, preventing leaks is a great way to conserve water. We just have to detect the leak and, um, that can save a ton of water. So we are making, uh, leak detection tabs available at the satellite Philly halls for, until the end of this week. And, um, they're gonna be available all year round at Baritania at our public service building as well as at Hardware Hawaii. And that's my report for this month.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from board members at this time? Okay. Janelle, you're recognized. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Michelle. Um, thank you, Chair Ross. Um, I had a question in regards to, uh, water testing. Um, in, in lieu of what's actually going on now with the, uh, current situation with the CRIs, um, has the Board of Water Supply offered any type of water testing within the community, um, um, to detect any levels of contaminants or any other type of like TPH?
Mm-hmm. Um, is it okay if I report to you on that next month?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I have a, uh, follow-up question. Uh, you know, increasingly as we come, uh, as we've ascertained more information about the Red Hill crisis and the discussions about housing on Oahu, um, what are the estimations for how much water access has been lost more long-term and how that's gonna, uh, affect things like planning for population, housing and other related issues at this time? Do, do we have a clearer vision of where we've landed on that or is it still in development, working out, understanding on?
Well, that's a, um, great question. Great timing on both those questions, cause we, we're actually talking about that tonight at our meeting. Um, but just so that I can give you, uh, very full and give the topic its due time, is that okay if I address that next month?
Absolutely. Uh, and if you have any handouts or data or something like that, we'd be, uh, happy to receive that as well.
Okay. Perfect. Well, definitely collect that for next month.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, well, thank you for that. Any questions from other attendees? Yes, please come on.
Hey, for Board of Water Supply, a quick question on, uh, the infrastructure on Green Street. Uh, you know, they've done these, uh, additional buildings with this, uh, new building on Ernestine Bean. Uh, they had several other, uh, construction going on that they built some other, uh, property, enlarged their, uh, footprint. I heard they were just gonna build another area and, uh, the last building on the corner of Green and Ernest, they couldn't get the pressure up, uh, and, uh, so they had to put a pump. That's a building. But for us as a resident, you know, I have a house and I had Board of Water Supply come to my house about three times to check the pressure. And it's what the excuse was or their explanation was, it was acceptable at thirty-five pounds or whatever it was that just met the borderline. But, you know, how is that acceptable if we're not looking at infrastructure getting, um, you know, rebuilt or looked at or increasing and expecting like this building? Oh, yeah, I get it.
So just somebody's question, are you asking, uh, how is current development affecting water pressure in the community?
Yes, and, and if they're looking at trying to in- increase or like improve our infrastructure, you know, with the, uh, increase of the buildings and, and these properties getting built. So just looking at the instruct, uh, infrastructure.
Are you able to speak to the water pressure concern articulated by Rich?
Um, I, I will need to check on that, the addresses and, um, what the results were from the test. Um, if he doesn't mind and if it's relevant, if it helps answer the question, if I can have his address at some point, he can email me if, if he'd like.
Okay. Um, and then- Please message, put in the chat your email address and I'll write it down on paper and hand it over right now.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
Any other questions from attendees at this time? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much for your report. I'll look forward to receiving your email.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for having me and you all. Have a good night. Aloha.
Great. Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to new business. Uh, has our, um, the first item is filling a vacancy. Has our, uh, NCO, uh, rep, um, received any addressed information or interest for people filling this vacancy?
Yes, Sam Mitchell.
You heard, you heard from Sam Mitchell. Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Sam Mitchell, are you interested in joining the board? Would you mind come up in front of us and addressing us? And could you move the mic a little closer, maybe back to that location? All right. So Sam Mitchell, the man who needs no introduction, could you give us a brief introduction about yourself?
Well, again, a member of this board for at least eight years before and, uh, total on, uh, another neighborhood board for a total of thirty years. So I have a lot of experience. It's also been president of the Sheed Association, uh, vice president of the White Metal Trades Council, Chick Yard, and, uh, Legislative Vice President of DARF, which is, uh, National Active Retired Federal employees. So politically, I know a lot about politics. Was a presidential, presidential elector twice and, uh, I hear that it's an opening. I lost all my last election by two votes. If I figure it out, if you're time, you gotta go back in. So, any questions?
Thank you very much, Sam. I'm gonna recognize still with-
Yes. Very, very, very. You follow up, ride or come, find the history. Arc of the eyes, saving.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna stop kindly. I'm gonna pause, pump it some sand for a minute. You wanna sit over there, you're welcome to a little further back. If you wanna ask, uh, if there are anyone else interested in the vacancy or some just very children. Okay, so we have, uh, one interested member. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any, uh, questions for Sam? Hearing none, uh, and seeing none online, uh, it's, okay, Janelle, you're recognized at this time, Janelle.
Uh, I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion to appoint, um, Sam to the vacancy of, uh, sub-district two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Okay, we have a motion. Uh, any further discussion for? Any further discussion by any other attendees? All right. Well, seeing none, uh, would you please make a roll call? Uh, for this type of vote for board members, it is not a yes or no, but it is a Sam or no. So they have, all right. So it's Sam or no, and the threshold here is nine votes. Long wind.
Russ, uh-
Sam.
Sam or no?
At a point of order, Janelle, what was that?
Uh, I, I couldn't hear you quite, um, clearly. Can you repeat?
There are two voting options, Sam or no. Thresholds nine votes.
So SAM or SAND?
SAM.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm starting the roll, the roll call at the top again. Along the wind.
Sam.
Carson.
Sam.
Shar.
Sam.
Kuchinaka.
Sam.
Venger. Hawano.
Sam.
Clink.
Sam.
I heard it. Kujima. Lata Lata. Lee. Nakamura.
Sam.
Cat.
Sam.
Salaza.
Sam.
Santos. Subvast.
Sam.
Ross. Sam. Thirty. Oh, break.
We grant your recess. A few inkblacker, if you don't have one of yours, you're gonna save me enough for the rest of the day. Please sit right.
I saw the newspaper. And I would create these. Charlie's a pro. But that's what I'm doing.
All right. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Meeting is back to order. Um, the next item on the agenda is the motion to support or oppose the closed sale of, uh, employee mini park. Uh, I'm just gonna really check, uh, really briefly if you can see with any sort of comments on the closed sale for employee mini park. If you plan to say something about it, can you just see a few show hints? Okay, so we have quite a few people. We tried to offer really generous speaking time, uh, at this board, about three minutes. This is just not gonna be practical if I wanna give all of you an off-chain speaking. So, uh, in order for us to try to balance this out, my party will try to give comments to one minute. I'll be very nice. Ask people to nicely summarize at that point. Um, also, we came back some comments, I've been broke comments, you know, the focus is very helpful and your comments can focus on things that other people have said. But if you're allowed to take them in however you want, it's gonna be most comfortable for our conversation if we get a variety of viewpoints. At the start, always please say your name, even if you've been up here and said your name before. And please start with saying you're in support, oppose, or have comments. It's just gonna be very helpful for everyone to sort of understand. And so that's the way we're gonna try to handle a bit of this discussion. We're gonna start this internal horn discussion, place members speak, and then we're gonna open it up to the public at that point. I'm gonna say one last thing. Ultimately, what this neighborhood board decides tonight may not have a lot of influence at the end for this city council. So one thing that's really difficult for us to consider is why you're in support or opposed. Cause one thing that neighborhood boards sometimes do effectively is mitigate arguments. We give one quick example. If there's concerns that might be housing development on that block, that's why you're opposed. Saying that the board could take action, for example, to say, city, if you go ahead with this, please put, uh, as a part of the arrangement, that housing development in this area. This is a way that we might be more effective, even if we don't ultimately get our full stance approved. Okay, that was my throat clearing, but I thought that might be important to help kind of focus the discussion on this. With that, I'm gonna open up the discussion among board members. Do any board members have any comments at this time? Sam, please go ahead.
There's a couple of things that we need to look at. One of the big things that this board has talked about is having a dog park. And we've been back and forth and the Parks Department has kind of like not done anything about a dog park. So that could be a dog park. It would have to put up a fence. You question if they have water. There'd be, uh, assorted things. The question I have is that city council has not really said anything about the sale of this property. And they're saying that the person who's buying it has two houses next to it. And there's possibly that they own the condo on the other side. So are they looking at boat rent housing? And what's gonna happen to the people that live in that housing? Will they be displaced? Will they knock it down and they build low rent? Will there be an agreement? That if they get sell the property, then it must be used for low rent housing. Those are the things that I think the board should pass that says if they sell the property, they must use it for some use that the community can use. That's it.
Thank you very much. And perfectly in a minute, a good model for how to start this discussion. Any other discussion from board members in attendance right now? Claire, please go ahead.
All right. As I understand it, no one's been able to get the developer owner to say what they plan to do with it. Have we gotten anything from that end?
Very good question. Uh, so I did attempt to track down, uh, the owner. Their, their name is listed and I forgot one rule here. We have to be really careful with any claims, uh, about the owner or something online. So feel free to voice all concerns that you have. We have to make sure we don't go into the realm of, uh, defamation, like saying this person's gonna do this or something. I'll be very careful on that, just raising that right now. But I did reach out on an old phone number with a Better Business Bureau and it was a disconnected number. I reached out to Chair Waters who introduced the reservoir request. I didn't hear back from any contact information. So I did attempt to reach out. I didn't go over personally to that area, cause my understanding is the owner doesn't reside at that block. Please continue that. Or the adjacent lot that they own is, is not in.
Okay. Um, I'd like to know more what they're thinking of doing and what the options are, because putting another tower on the postage stamp just doesn't sit right with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I see a few hands up on the chats. We're gonna go over to a couple of, uh, other attendees. Uh, Thomas, you're recognized at this time.
Uh, Chair, before I begin my comments, is quoting the KO21 article, uh, at points, gonna, that's not gonna be considered defamation rights, as long as I make that clear.
Yeah, you're saying this is what you read. You're gonna be totally fine, I believe. Well, actually, my opinion does not, uh, is not legally-
Well, I, I'm going to preface all this by saying it's reported according to Kate, this, you know, this KO21 article. Or, uh, the BFS Deputy Director had called the property, quote, "a remnant property. There is no use," end quote. And they also said, paraphrasing here, that they reached out to DPR before they went and had the go-ahead. My question is, does our Parks Department have a policy on small parcels? Because it seems that they did not have any say in the matter. Or if they did, they must not have anything on the books on how we can best utilize our smaller green spaces. There is a word for this in urban planning. They're called pocket parks. You can look them up and I might share a few articles in the chat afterwards. Municipalities across the country use these small parcels as green spaces and take advantage of them. I'm just disappointed in the lack of vision, um, that this is usually a last resort before other solutions have been tried. So I'm just really disappointed in the city's lack of vision here and I hope that they can reconsider.
Thank you very much. Uh, please go, uh, I'm gonna go with Janelle, then we'll come back to you. Janelle, you're recognized at this time.
Uh, thank you, Chair Ross. Um, I, I do, uh, agree with my fellow board member, Thomas. Um, I, I think if the city, uh, especially the Parks Department really utilized that corner park, um, to its full capacity, it would not be in, uh, dismay as it is now and used as a housing area at times for, um, the homeless community. Um, I, I do have a question into the regards of if they are going to proceed with the sale of that, um, park. Uh, what type of, um, structures are they planning on, on putting there? How's that gonna mitigate the traffic i- issues already in the, the district along with, um, is that gonna increase, um, the housing costs? So what all of our board members brought up thus far, I, I think I support in, in opposing, um, the sale of the park.
Thank you very much. Uh, John, you're recognized at this time.
Um, I think-
I think getting rid of a park is probably not a good idea. We have so many people here and so little space, that making one more house doesn't help nearly as much, and it makes it a better park. Probably recommend taking the park.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other comments from the board at this time? We can come back around a bit. So I wanna share a little bit about some of the discussions that I've had so far, and some, uh, some things I remember from previous park discussions. And I'm not the final word on this, I'm just trying to bring together and aggregate what I've heard so far. So, the City Council did have a hearing among the whole council yesterday. And my comments to it, representing the board, was, "We likely have these types of concerns, but we haven't had a chance to discuss it yet." And that I, my, I left it a comment, because we needed the board's, like, thoughts on this before I would go support or oppose, but I asked them to hold on for passing the vote. And I'm really grateful to the City Council, they recommitted it to, I believe, the Budget Committee, and that means it's gonna go through a couple of more hearing stages. And I think that's great. It gives us some time to really have a discussion tonight. You know, our mayor has a lot of town hall schedules, it's great to have an active mayor. One of the town halls are tonight. So we just don't have directors here or representatives from the mayor's office, who might be able to answer some of these very specific questions, like, "Does the park have water?" Uh, "What are the owners thinking of doing it? How are those requests?" So we're gonna hit a little bit of a wall in this discussion. We're not as well-informed in the discussion as we would hope, but still means we can list all these concerns. I did have a chance to talk with Director Thielen yesterday at Cartwright Park for, uh, one of their events down there. And so I did get some of the information, it's considered a remnant lot, like we were hearing. The lack of parking is one of those things that really diminishes the amount of uses. We also, as we heard back in February, it's largely considered not eligible to be a dog park because of the square footage. Dog parks, they like to be around thirty thousand square feet. This is under five thousand, so it's not even close. Now, I do have to think it's a great location for a dog park. Who's gonna be mad about, uh, barking with all the horns being pumped there? There's a lot of advantages, but that's the problem. The other big vision we've heard in some of the discussions on Nextdoor and elsewhere is the idea of a community garden. There's a lot of promise in that, right? Uh, however, the lack of parking doesn't, I understand, formally disqualify it, but they always look for parking, because community garden residents come from all over, and they need to park to bring their stuff over, right? Uh, so those are kind of two options that might not be in there. And I bring that up, because if we wanna push for them, we'd have to have a good reason, or we might have to think outside the box a little bit more there, too. So, I wanted to highlight those things I heard so far. The last one is, I believe, according to Councilmember Tyler de Santos, Sam, this became a remnant lot due to a large amount of eminent domain to expand Peekoi some years ago. And so basically, they eminent domain some land that wasn't immediately necessary, so they put a park there, and then the city has not found a use for the park? I'm not sure what the formal definition of that is since then. And so that's the information I've been able to gather, uh, about the sort of dynamics going on here. Uh, so with that, I want to open up to further discussion from attendees. So if you'd like to say something, please come up here. Uh, the mic's gonna be on that chair. Introduce yourself, oppose or support, and, uh, take your minute. No, you can stand right here, yeah. Thank you, please say your name for us.
Hi, yes, my name is Amanda Kirby. I went to give oral testimony yesterday at the City Council. I oppose the sale of the park solely. It's a green space, it's a public space, we're not getting more of them. We're clearly building on the ton. I know there's a lot of issues. Quick point out, I'm also the Vice President of the Teke Community Garden, as well as the Honolulu Community Garden Council. It would be a nice place if there was water, I'm unsure. But to make it a community garden, we have to get rid of that monkey paw tree, that's unsure. And I don't think that's a good idea. It's a phenomenal treat for that area. It's just not giving enough shade or enough sun if there were to be a garden. Dog park, though, I understand there's square footage requests, but Kaka Aqua at Mother Waldron has a very small dog park that they put in that area. So I think it could be looking for, but also, uh, I know there's not a lot of parking for use of that, but there's also fifteen multi-level apartment buildings on that one block alone in Peekoi. So yes, there might not be a lot of use for that park for people driving in, but on that street alone, there's a massive amount of people. So I strongly oppose, I'm also gonna be going to the community budget meeting, um, on the thirtieth. That was it. I am all done, thank you so much.
I, I believe I read your testimony, uh, to the City Council as well. Okay, anyone else would like to speak on this issue?
Um, hello, everyone, my name's Adam Strubeck. Um, I live in Makiki, and I'm a graduate student in the Urban and Regional Planning Program at UH Manoa. Um, I'd like to oppose the sale of this park. In general, I think I'm against privatization of public space. And the Department of Parks and Rec lists thirty-three mini parks, and Peekoi Mini Park qualifies as one of those mini parks, or pocket parks, as, um, another council member said. I think it's a dangerous precedent to start selling mini parks, as it could lead to the sale of other mini parks. So I'd just like to reiterate that I'm opposed to this stuff. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Just please go back.
My name is Mr. Chung. I'm opposed to the sale of parks in general. However, my comment is this: status quo is not acceptable. Okay? All those people who live there, sad, all those people are truant, probably. Status quo, the way it is now, unacceptable.
Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Okay, uh, I'll bring back just the board discussion. Uh, so we heard from a number of residents here, oh wait, actually, pardon me, I needed other time to present my question. So, uh, if the board would like to take a motion, my recommendation is to be very specific on the categories of concern. So as I brought up before, you know, there can be stipulations in the sale. So for example, very concerned because of the tree, uh, we could say we're opposed, and if a sale were to continue, we want a proviso or something on the sale that requires the tree stay there or something along those. We can start to be very specific, um, with the types of concerns, in case we don't get a hundred percent of what we want. That would be just my recommendation. And I did try to take down what everyone's listed as their specific concerns. Do we have a mo, uh, Janelle, I see your hand up, please continue. Do you have a motion or?
I, I, before we have our motion, uh, when is this resolution gonna be, um, submitted? Uh, or is due, so that the council can actually make a vote on, on the decision?
Thank you, because we don't have a resolution. Normally, I try to write resolutions in advance as best I can. I didn't know what the discussion would take, so sometimes I do want in favor, want to oppose, like on the, the five-way intersection issue, I have both resolutions. I don't have one today. So I'd recommend a very specific, bullet-pointed motion, in which case we can transmit that as like an email form, won't be as fancy, unfortunately. The earliest, I believe, it can be heard from the Budget Committee, would, you would have to have a schedule, uh, with a, uh, pardon me, uh, either five or seven-day notice for City Council, are you familiar? Okay. We do have a former City Council member in the room, Senator Fukunaga. Is it five or seven-day notice for a hearing for the City Council? Thank you very much, it is seven. I didn't see you there, back there, you're hiding behind the senator somewhere. I didn't see you, I'm sorry. So it's seven-day, which is a lot better than the state legislature being two days. So the earliest would be seven days from now. Uh, and normally, these, the committee hearings be on Wednesday, so it'd be two weeks at the earliest.
I don't know how to draft my motion.
No worries.
But I, I do wanna present a motion, um.
How about we get a motion for or against? We have some discussion, and then we can motion to amend from there if we find, uh, uh, some language. Sam, you're recognized at this time.
I move, I've been Makikiated before, support Keke's park. And that they install porta potties and benches in the park to allow people to use it better.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
I also have an amendment.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's hang on for a second. So we got a second, so we have a motion before. We're gonna open a discussion, and he wants to make a, uh, he wants to make a motion for amendment, go ahead.
I recommend that we get water in there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No use doing all that if it doesn't have any water.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, we have a motion to amend, do we have a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, we got the Thomas Baldwin on the second. We're gonna open up into further discussion. Uh, we're gonna, this part of the discussion is the board, we will check in back with the public before any votes are held, just so people know. Okay, I see Janelle's hand up, Janelle, you're recognized.
So, um, I agree with the motion, um, with the one issue of porta potties. Now, this is an additional cost that the city's gonna have to endure or take up, um, in that mini park. I understand that the, the porta potties are necessary for, you know, uh, ease of use, but are those porta potties gonna be cleaned weekly or daily? Um, as, we don't know what the traffic, foot traffic is gonna be in the area, which then creates a possible, um, issue of environmental because of either the smells or even possible if the, the porta potties break down. So, I support the motion, I just wanna make sure that if we are gonna put that into motion, that we take in consideration, um, maybe not having the porta potties as, as one of the, the means to, um, reuse the, the space.
Chair, point of order.
Yes, please go ahead.
That's a, a very, um, that's a good observation, but I do, I think we're just talking about amendment regarding water, correct?
It's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so for amendment for water, yes, Sam?
Reason why I put in porta potties.
No, no, water, water.
Water.
Yes.
Water's important, because you need to have a place to wash up. And if we're gonna put a park or garden or whatever, that's gonna be needed.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna call a, uh, this is just a vote to amend the motion, to be very clear. I'm gonna seek unanimous consent to add the installation of water on that, so we can continue the discussion with the motion as a whole. Is anyone opposed or abstaining? You need to speak up now.
Uh, I'll abstain.
Okay, in which case, we're gonna have a roll-call vote on this amendment. Okay, can you please take the roll-call vote on the amendment? This is to add, uh, installing wa, a request to install water to the motion, which is, uh, maintaining the park as a public space, or something to that effect, and installing, uh, porta potty, uh, porta potties and benches there. Baldwin.
Hi.
Carson.
Abstain.
Char.
Uh, forgive me, I missed out on the, whi, which motion are we on now? I think my internet broke a little. Oh, motion to amend, this is to amend the, uh, addition of water.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I.
No, that was already in there. Fujinaka.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Grandjer. Kowano.
Abstain.
Clayne.
Hi.
Kojima.
I'm here.
Lachalasa, Maanuuna. Lee. Nakamoro. Abstain. Nicho.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi.
Salasa.
Hi.
Santos.
Hi.
Stogwest.
Hi.
Ross. Hi. Ten zero for abstain, adopted. Thank you. I believe it will be helpful in this discussion for me to, uh, share the resolution up on the screen. All right, uh, continue the discussion with the amended motion. Any further discussion from the board at this time? Yes, please go ahead.
Concern about, we had a public comment about the homeless situation here. Water at Porta Potty is gonna be worse. I understand the need for these, these folks to everything, houses right now, like have these facilities, but, uh, wait, whoops. Resolution on that, Travis.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead, Sam.
Somebody that, uh, have been involved with homeless issues in the community for years to topics on, food not bombs.
Could you speak up just a little bit more?
Yeah, like food not bombs and a sort of other things. Use of toilets and places to sit down are major issues, not only where there's major homelessness, but also in places like North Street Mall. And this is becoming a, an issue throughout the island. Now, to go and say you can't use the bathroom is kind of the worst thing you could do. I don't think it's gonna, I mean, there's a homeless, there's a house in the area that everybody's using the toilet.
Sam, can you summarize your remarks?
Yes. Basically, I think that's needed, and that's one of the reasons why I had to point it out.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize, um, Janelle at this time.
Um, so I agree with Sam's, um, observation. To summarize, it, we have to remember what the park is. It is a mini park, um, and though we wanna be accessible to every possibility for that park to make it, um, beautified, it is an area that is not gonna be totally utilized by the general public, um, with full bathrooms or running water. Um, I, I think keeping it as what it is, adding benches as well as, uh, safety precautions, whether they put in lights, first of all, um, would probably help in that sense, along with beautification. So, um, that's my comment to that.
Thank you very much. Uh, any further discussion from board members? Yes, go ahead, Claire.
What Janelle is saying, keeping it as an open space with the beautiful historic treatment. People use it now to walk their dogs through, so it's already a really neat dog park. I know, because I've been walking my dog through there for many, many years. So, cleaning it up and, you know, having a water source is not the worst thing you could do. So, but keeping it an open green space for public use in a neutral way, uh, makes most sense.
Okay, so, I wanna say as Chair, I'm noticing some extremely different visions among board members, uh, in terms of what they wanna see the park be. And I think we're gonna have a little bit of a hard time, I think, passing any particular, specific resolution. Um, that's just, I'm starting to read the, the temperature on this, on this issue. I think on one hand, we have had robust discussion in the past about seeing that being a sanitary station, like Alhale or something like that. We've also had more discussion about the homelessness issue there than in any other parts of the community combined, right? And so, you know, these things aren't necessarily intention, you know, like having bathrooms near where there's homeless individuals is a way to help improve some of the problems related to that, right? But there is potentially intention with things like, uh, dog park, community garden, things like that. I do wanna note, what I, we heard earlier, there was a, another dog park that's very small. I find, because it is also the Maranal Mini Dog Park. Those are private dog parks, I believe, so unless you know very specifically if it's a city and county, that wouldn't have the rules. So I just wanna highlight, that's a very strong possibility that it, that's a, could be a private dog park, which is a different category of thing. The other part here, and my recommendation might be that we try to find a resolution that highlights a list of specific concerns as opposed to potential solutions. Otherwise, I fear we might end up in a bit of a loop with certain votes here. Because it does. Otherwise, I feel we might end up in a bit of a loop with certain votes here, cause it does sound like we don't disagree with any members' concerns, or we might disagree with some type of vision. So I want, that's just my recommendation on that part. Uh, with that, um, I wanna see if there's anyone, uh, who's in attendance, wants to comment on the motion as it is right now. Which is, uh, keeping the we move to keep the park with, as a city mini park, and install porta potty, porta potties and benches there as well as install or ensure there is running water. Please come up. Can you move the mic again? I'm sorry. And we are gonna ask you to introduce yourself again in a second. All right, please go ahead.
Hi, Amanda Kirby, just a quick comment. Um, it was talked about at City Council and also in the KHON. A big reason they wanted to sell the mini park is the maintenance fees, so I do wanna comment and just say, if we are gonna ask to oppose this, maybe asking for extra things might push back, cause they are trying to, you know, cut the budget a little bit. So I'm worried that if we do ask for water, they're gonna immediately be like, ah, no. Um, so, so just a heads up, they are worried about budgets specifically involved in the maintenance of this park. We don't know what that cost is. Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further public comment? That's all I got. I think we're gonna hear from councilmember said, and then what were your opinions next? All right, councilmember, thank you so much for being here.
Oh, thank you very much for the opportunity. Yes, yesterday, we did have the hearing on this particular rezubrication. And the issue that I brought up was in regards to what some of the board members have stated for the record. The acquisition of the park may suffice for a park dedication if the abutting property owner was to pay higher. Number one. Number two, I've listened to you folks for the past four years. That particular mini park is a hazard. It's a hazard on behalf of the homeless that go there. At the intersection of Nuno Nilo and Peabody, there is that corner, sitting with their chairs, asking for donations, drinking whatever they're doing or smoking, but all I'm saying, that particular issue has been a perennial issue for the board of Makiki on the homeless situation. At the first glance, when we had passed the measure from the Budget Committee, nobody talked about why it's a JR, they're a and that's where the discussion evolved to, but thanks to Amanda bringing it all up, it was a positive discussion that we had. The recommendation in postponing the passage of this resolution is that we're gonna try to find more information in regards from Budget and Fiscal Services, from the Department of Parks and Recreation, and also the Corporation Council. But in the provision of this resolution, let me say this, there are protection. Anybody know what's the zoning of that particular parcel? B2 preservation. It's gotta come before you folks to ask for rezoning. If you wanna build something on the park, then that's where you folks can also object. Public opportunities for the general public will be there. Number two, water, it might be very difficult if there is no I in. And for me, being the council chair for District Five, I've shared it with the board before in the past, for those who are not here. I represent about fourteen to sixteen different homeless encampments. From Crane Park, in Kamiki, Kapulu, to Stadium Park, to Moilili Field, to Manoa Park, Makiki Cartwright, Alaai Park, Mother Waldron Park, it just goes on. This particular park is not a recreational park, but a different class of a passive park. And that's where, I'm just trying to share with all of you, if you have any recommendations, that's where we're gonna use this vehicle. If you folks are opposed, great, but as far as how you address the homeless issue later on, we had an opportunity. That's where I'm coming from at this point, and, uh, Amanda, thank you very much for highlighting it. No, for real, it's Kirby.
I have a question.
Yes. So, uh, yeah, so we're about to, to bring out the game, the full, the full comments, but we can't let you do a question now, so I'm, I'm allowing it, so at least give it for.
They have to come to us, the public, under two one H.
No. Not yet. We're not even at two one H when you're applying for the building permit. No. Okay, the two one H is a state law that grants any developer all of these waivers and exemptions from the city's ordinances. Park dedication, hookup on your sewer line, building permit being sent to the process endlessly. And it's for us, if you're gonna do a two one H, it's affordable, right? And it's gonna be affordable for ten years where the developer does not pay any property taxes. And that's where I'm questioning what we are doing today too, in regards to the two one H. We are all for affordable, but can the city and county of Honolulu now exempt all of these affordables at the expense of those who are paying property taxes? Yeah, we wanna lower the cost of rent. Don't get me wrong. And lowering the cost of rent may take the exemption on your property tax for ten years, but who's paying for the services? Everyone else. So I just share this with you, because it's been a very, very fascinating journey for me in this past year and a half years. And for this year and a half, being the chair of the zoning committee, boy, what a wake up for me. So, I'll, I'll be back later on, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna bring back, is there anyone in attendance online with their hands up? Uh, John, I recognize you at this time.
Yeah, this will be my last comment on this item, unless, uh, the motion fails, in which case I have another thing to say, but, um, I just wanted to note something that the, uh, council member had said, um, one of the things he mentioned was because of the zoning, um, public opportunities would still be there even under a private owner, and I just wanna ask, how can we be sure? Um, while I'm typically more comfortable with public, you know, like the government owning our green spaces, so that we have a safe guaranteed, it would be reassuring to hear from the private property owner about their vision for the space. So we can make promises about it's not gonna get rezoned, we still have opportunities there. We don't know that until we hear from the private property owner themselves, so I would very much like to hear what their vision is for the space. So, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. All right, so again, we have to push it, uh, before us, we've heard some more comments. Uh, does anyone else wanna speak on the motion at all this time?
My name is Mr. Chung. I completely believe that using the bathroom is a human right, okay? And that's being violated all over the city. Sam is right. There's another human right, right to safety. Without police presence or private security, I dare anyone to use those bathrooms in. Hey, you're gonna go in there? It's a precedent, okay? It was a care space in town that had a drug bathroom set up. Happened was, this is reported in newspaper, that the prostitutes were using it, the drug users were using it. Finally, what happened, we had to get bodies in there for security, police, private, I don't remember what it was. So, my suggestion is we have a great opportunity to be able to do something, anything, which is that Asia, they have community safety kiosks set up on corners. Okay, this is gonna be a wonderful place, and you guys could set a precedent, and bring something that has been proven to work on a large community. This is not nineteen eighty, I believe. This is not twenty years ago. This is now. This is what Mr. Sam was saying. It's getting out of control, but there's an answer, which is if you put steady location, little kiosk in the critical places, no staff with police or volunteers, I suggest two volunteers then. There's a lot of people, I believe, that wanna contribute. Look at you guys in the board. What I'm saying is, I oppose, but it was just an amendment, with security included. Finally, I suggest innovation, something we can do here, by bringing security kiosks to the place.
Very much. All right, uh, I'm gonna hand over the chair in the meeting temporarily to Ethan Char, so if you're ready, go ahead.
Hello. Um, sorry, I have to attend via online. Um, so if I could have the help of the neighborhood assistant, and does anyone have their hands raised in the room?
Oh.
No, okay, uh, in that case, I'll go to, uh, Janelle Fujinaka.
Uh, can we go ahead and call for the, the, uh, the vote, please?
Point of order. Point of order, chair.
Yes.
Uh, before we have a vote, would I be able to speak?
I'm sorry, could, what, speak?
Would I be able to speak before?
Oh, yes.
So I handed over the chairing, uh, time myself here. Uh, I handed over the chairing, so I can speak on this motion. Uh, really unfortunately, uh, and as chair, I haven't done this before, I'm gonna be voting against this motion. I think it's a little bit messy in terms of conveying the community's specific concerns. Uh, I agree with what you've said about human rights and badly, because I'm also agreeing that the number one concern I hear is shared is the specific types of crimes that we committed right there. Uh, I think that we need to kind of figure out how we want to massage that a little bit more. Uh, the other issue, of course, for things like community parks and installation of water, what I've been hearing from the city is they're getting, wanna get rid of this, because there's no money, no capacity to attack it. Uh, I looked really carefully for things like dog parks and other things. Um, for me, I am incredibly in favor of maintaining green spaces. I'm incredibly in favor of not selling off public assets, so I wanna be really clear on this. I just feel that the motion is currently written, doesn't really touch upon what I'm, I think I heard from the community here tonight, so I'm gonna politely, uh, vote no. Thank you, chair.
Okay, uh,
I got a question.
Uh, I believe that's Sam, go for it.
I'd like to chair this, this motion, I mean, not chair, table this motion, because we really don't have an understanding of what they wanna do with this property.
That's a fair point.
And, uh, if they're gonna be building, like, uh, affordable housing or something in the area, and I could see that that would be, would make sense, but until we get, we get word from the people that own the property next door, and how much, how long that's gonna take, I think it's, we're, we're kinda ahead of, ahead of ourselves. So, uh, I move that we chair, we chair this motion, I mean, table it.
Point of order.
Yeah, uh, um, I was about to say, I believe there's a point of, or, I'm lost on my point of insert here. Um, but Corinne had a question, can we just make a motion just to endorse not selling it without more info? We are currently in a motion at the moment, so we'll need to take care of that first, uh, and then let me address, so the next person's hand up is, uh, Thomas, I recognize Thomas.
Uh, was it, I have two comments. One, was there a second to the motion to table?
Uh, hmm, no, I did not hear. Oh, I guess, um,
It's a second, unless, uh, someone already did. Still question.
Wait, wait, point of order, we already had a motion on the table, and then there was a motion to amend, and then there's another motion on the table.
No, so, okay, so we've had the motion to amend, we shh, accepted it, so the current motion is, I believe, uh, huh, um, with bathrooms, water, and I forgot what the third thing is, uh, if someone
And water.
Water's the amendment.
Yeah, the water is the amendment. Um, so that passed, and now the current motion is the three things. Uh,
And now, now there, if you, chair, if I might,
Yes.
This motion does take precedence, the motion to table, any motion takes precedence, and that's what's been introduced.
Yes, so we have had the, exactly, the motion to table, and it has been seconded. Uh, do we have any discussion?
And that was, if I could, my second comment for this, um, to answer Corinne's question that was in the chat, we could still do a motion afterwards simply to oppose, um, the sale until we get more information on the intended use of the property, so that is still a possibility. And we just keep that short and sweet and simple.
Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion to table this motion?
No.
Okay. Uh, well, without further discussion, uh, does anybody object to us tabling this motion? Okay, uh, with no, with no objections, uh, by acclamation, this motion is tabled. Uh,
Okay.
Okay, returning to the, uh, um, agenda item.
The gamble back over to me, Nathan?
Yes, I can go ahead and do that.
I, I, apparently I gave Nathan a bit of a, uh, Robert's Rules gymnastics routine there, I apologize. Okay, so we're back on here. Uh, I went ahead and drafted what I think might resemble a, a motion that someone could read that's on this. Could you please open the chat on your screen? Just click the chat window, the bubble. It might not be perfect, but I did attempt, uh, to write out what I heard. All right, I see some hands raised. I recognize Thomas Baldwin at this time.
Chair, I move that the Makiki Neighborhood Board opposes sale of Lot Forty-Six, Peekoi Mini Park until such time that sufficient information of the intended lot is made publicly accessible, and sufficient time allowed for community input.
I second the motion.
Um, can, wait, Thomas, are you still making the motion? Do you wanna add, uh, amendments as needed for clarity, consistency, and style?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Janelle, do you want a second?
Second the motion.
Uh, this allows us to tweak if there's any sort of word usage there, for example, Thomas read one of my typos, uh, so we, we should be now clear on this. So now we have a very basic opposition and desire for more information. Any further discussion from the board at this time? Okay, we had a lot of public comments on this, uh, you know, I think the boards, I hope you feel like we've really tried to hear all of you folks out. Does anyone wanna speak in favor or against this motion among the public attendees? Okay, uh, in which case, um, I believe we can attempt to seek unanimous consent. Uh, don't feel pressured if you don't agree with this motion. We, we can do a roll call vote if needed. Would anyone like to oppose or abstain the passage of this motion? Okay, hearing done, uh, we have a motion. We have a stance on this issue. Uh, thank you, everyone, for the very robust conversation on this. All right, we're now going to move on to the next item on the agenda. This is board recommendations for Peekoi Mini Park's Beiki Station relocation. I heard from Beiki, the, if the park is sold, the understanding is that the Beiki Station must move. Beiki asked us as a community if we have any ideas on where we might want additional Beiki stations. Any discussion from the board? I see Janelle's hand up, and then I'm, no, actually, I'm gonna take this out of order. Uh, Corinne, do you please go first?
They removed the Beiki Station over by the graveyard at Pensacola and, um, Wilder, and I wondered if that's temporary, uh, or if they intend to restore that location, cause anyway, I would recommend that that location be restored.
Thank you. Uh, Janelle, you're recognized at this time.
Um, just to, uh, add on to Corinne's, um, I believe because of the construction, it's probably temporary, but as to move the, um, Beiki Station from its current location, if the park is sold, there is not an adequate space that would, um, take up any parking, so even moving that Beiki Station would not be beneficial unless they move it to, like, Safeway. I'm very termine.
Thank you. Uh, I recognize Nathan.
Uh, I was gonna say, uh, it would be good to see some usage statistics on that, uh, just for our, uh, you know, getting informed. Um, just, yeah, to see just how, how, how well used that one is, uh, so that we can try and examine any areas that we might, uh, see be picking up the slack, uh, of getting rid of that spot.
Great, thank you so much. Any, any further discussion from the board? Seeing done, anyone in the public have any recommendations? All right, well, I'll take these two comments back. Thank you so much, everyone. We're gonna move on now to unfinished business. Motion to support or oppose Hunaho Square as potential site for a dog park. I do have a small update here. I was talking, as I mentioned yesterday, I talked with, uh, Parks Director Thielen. Uh, she mentioned that she was driving the area recently, looking over at a park in Makiki and thinking, gosh, that looks like a good location for a dog park. gosh, that looks like a good location for a dog park, and it happens to be Punahou Square, um. Her basic statement was, if we wanted to get some movement on this, the first action would be the board passing a motion. I went ahead and also contacted all of the surrounding, uh, churches, Arcadia, et cetera, to remind them that this is on the agenda, but that reminder was one or two days ago. Um, so then we might still hear in the future, they thought was inadequate, even though it was posted on the agenda, and we didn't bring it up two months ago, and it was also mentioned that we'd bring it up again. I think they'd still have potential grounds for complaint, I'll just put that out there. Uh, so let's see, uh, do we have any discussion, or do we have a motion from the board to start with?
Um, I make a motion to support, uh, Punahou Square as a potential dog park site.
Second.
Thank you very much, okay, forward discussion. Sam, you recognize at this time?
Does it have water?
May.
They install fence? What is square footage?
Uh, yes, um, my understanding is it has water, um, fences, uh, it would be an off-leash dog park is what was discussed, so the assumption is yes on my part, and then square footage, I actually have that. Um, so I'm gonna hold that for a moment, let's see if there's any other hands up. Any further, uh, community discussion, anyone else want to weigh in on this? All right, we're just all waiting on me, one second.
I just have a comment, Chair Ross.
Uh, please go ahead, I'm gonna recognize Janelle.
Um, so with making this a, a potential dog park site, at least it's being utilized, um, because I believe right now it's currently not being as utilized as necessary, sometimes that park does have the tendency to smell funny. Um, I'm not sure what that smell was, but, um, if we can use it in a capacity where it does have benches, as well as, um, where residents can take their dogs, too, I think this would be beneficial.
Sorry, is that, is that a motion to amend?
No, 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 uh, it's just a comment.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I, I was able to find the information, it would be over twenty thousand square feet, I don't have an exact, when I use a satellite estimation. Um, and there is notably no parking, but that wouldn't necessarily affect the nearby people walking, there is parking at, uh, Makiki District Park. Um, and then the usage is generally considered low. Uh, furthermore, um, I will say Director Thielen made note of benches. Uh, she had mentioned it, there was no promises there, but she didn't mention benches. Yes, please go ahead.
Should be with or without fences, but after having fenced ready.
It would be, for off-leash, you'd require to have that, yes, I will note that there are some dog parks with no fences, that would be on-leash dog parks, um. Sorry, the park right up above us, right, right, uh, uh, Makiki Street, uh, the name is on the tip of my tongue, that's an example of that, Archie Baker. Yes, okay. Well, we have the motion, uh, we had a robust discussion two months ago, um, I'm gonna call the vote. Uh, let's see, seek if there's unanimous consent on this, um, actually, could you please read the motion one more time for us?
To, uh, move to support Punahou Square as potential site for a dog park.
Great, thank you very much. Any board members opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, we have a motion, and I want to say, uh, when I joined the board in twenty seventeen, I wanted to sit down with the area legislator, and that's Dela Albalati, and I asked her, what are the top issues for the community, and one of the first ones she mentioned is a potential dog park. So to the board members who've worked on this, uh, to the community as intended, I just want to applaud, thank you so much for your diligence and all of this. So we have, we have a first move towards an official position here, so thank you everyone who's been involved and stay involved. Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, we're gonna move on to update on Chick-fil-A South Baritania Street signage, do we have a representative from Chick-fil-A with us this evening?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, I give you a few minutes, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, board, for allowing us to be here, thank you, Chair Ross, um, the update as of today is, uh, the Chick-fil-A corporate office has been in communication with DTS as well as the QVR board. Um, thank you to residents Lindsay Chambers, Deb Wimora, for all of their efforts. Um, we have received approval by DTS for an exception to MUTCD requirements for signage along Baritania. Um, the sign designs have been approved as well by both DTS as well as statewide safety systems, the company that's gonna be manufacturing the signs. Um, Chick-fil-A corporate has provided payment information, so as of right now, s- safety, uh, statewide safety systems is in the process of fabricating the signs, upon completion of fabrication, they're gonna get in touch with our team to coordinate installation.
Great, thank you very much for that, uh, great update, is, uh, Lindsay with us? Hi Lindsay, could you unmute yourself, we'd love to hear if you have a, a minute or two on updates from, uh, your condo, and, uh, I know you have a several concerns, we'd love to hear them now.
Yeah, I have, um, fellow resident Deb, I'm here to update on behalf of the condo, but, um, I did want to ask this board, if possible, um, one specific, um, thing was regarding a parking, uh, sorry, traffic study. Um, I think for us, during hours that cars are able to park, um, we find that, um, cars waiting in line to go to Chick-fil-A are straddling two lanes. There's also congestion that, you know, hopefully the signage that Kevin has been working on will help alleviate, but the blocking of the driveways, and so the reason why I'm asking the neighborhood board is because, um, a traffic study wasn't required of Chick-fil-A before they opened, because current city code says that if the lot is being used for the same purpose, um, they won't have to do one, and I think we all know that Burger King and Chick-fil-A are very different products with very different demands, and so, um, what can be done, though, according to DTS, is that if the mayor overrides that decision, he can require a traffic study to be done. And really, what we want the traffic study for is to pinpoint the areas of impact and specific peak hours, and the data can be used to better inform solutions, like adjusting parking hours, better signage, road markings, things like that. Um, until then, it's really anecdotal, and, and this is not Kevin, but CFA's corporate offices have outright denied that there is a problem happening with traffic when we send them videos of what's going on, and so I think in order to have really concrete data, a traffic study would need to be done, so just requesting that this board make that request to the mayor, just because of the weight it would carry versus just a resident like me, so I'm making that request to you, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, do any in-person, okay, please go ahead.
And like the motion that we asked the city to do a traffic study for the Chick-fil-A area.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, great, Janelle, was that what your hand was up for?
No, it was also to add.
Please go ahead.
Question.
Go ahead.
So, when Chick-fil-A initially came to the board to announce that they were gonna go ahead and, um, have a location at that site, I, I did bring up the concern with traffic. Um, putting in these signs, I don't believe will mitigate the traffic, um, problem, um, of course, thank you for the suggestion of the, the traffic, um, study to be done, because at the end of the day, uh, there are peak times, and, and I am a customer of Chick-fil-A, I, I'm not gonna say that I haven't eaten there. Um, I have gone during, um, non-peak hours, which is great, so I'm not sitting in traffic, but I think the biggest concern is, when we first initially were approached by Chick-fil-A, we were told that there wouldn't be any problems with traffic, and now it is being brought back to this board, and, um, I.
Janelle, could you summarize your remarks, please?
Yes, I, I strongly recommend that this board take action on getting that traffic, um, study conducted.
Thank you very much, uh, you know, so far, we've only heard indirectly what Chick-fil-A's position is, I think it's only fair we actually offer Kevin the opportunity, uh, to speak on the position of Chick-fil-A at this time.
And this is specifically in relation to conducting a traffic study?
Yeah, so we had heard from Lindsay just now that Chick-fil-A corporates, if I remember correctly, uh, says there's no need for a traffic study, and so that's, she's, of course, in that case, speaking somewhat on behalf of your company secondhand, I wanted to make sure, uh, that's a fair representation of, uh, the stance, as you understand it.
Yeah, so Chick, Chick-fil-A corporate, I mean, they, they abided by all of the rules, requirements, and regulations at the time to get the restaurant up and running, so the, the comments that they give us is that everything was pretty much above board. Everything that was required of them, whether it was by DTS, whether it was by DPP, was abided by to put that restaurant in place. Um, if a traffic study is to be done, it would have to be communicated with Chick-fil-A corporate, because at the end of the day, Zane and myself, I mean, we're essentially local operators, so to speak, we're, we're from here, and we just got placed in this location, Chick-fil-A selected the location, Chick-fil-A leases the land, Chick-fil-A constructed the building, so they, they would be the ones that the board would have to speak to for anything traffic study related.
So to, to be clear, uh, you wouldn't personally, or in representation of the local managers, be opposed to a traffic study on principle?
We, we, we're gonna do whatever the board recommends and whatever Chick-fil-A corporate is in agreement of.
Okay, thank you very much, that's, that's a, that's an answer, I think that's actionable for us.
Yeah.
Uh, I do want to, uh, comment that I did have a chance to sit down with Kevin and talk a bit about this, and he did highlight two worthwhile facts to consider, that the lines over time have been decreasing by total number, I believe, not dramatically, but it's there, and then also they've been, the average wait time per customer has substantially declined over time and is continuing to decline. So I did, well, I thought that was a worthwhile part based on the data, because we've been asking as a board, as we make these decisions, data. So, um, those are two, uh, noteworthy facts, and I appreciate that you shared that with me earlier.
Thank you, Chair Ross, our pleasure.
Okay, so.
And I'm sorry, Chair, I wanted to just call on, um, fellow resident Deb Wimora, who's on?
Yes, please, uh, is her, I didn't see her hand up, Deb, you're recognized at this time.
Okay, um, I do just wanna, um, echo Lindsay's comments, um, Kevin and Zane have both been, um, very communicative, um, with us, but we do know that it is Chick-fil-A corporate, um, that does make the final, um, decisions for the most part. Um, and I will say that potentially sometimes, um, it's a little bit, the communication time spring, timeframe has to go across the Pacific Ocean. Um, but one of the issues, and, um, we, I did notice today, um, the city did put up the no parking between six AM and six PM sign in front of Chick-fil-A, um, because I do want to point out that part of the issue sometimes is people parking illegally now on the right-hand side of Baritania Street, when they should not be parking between six AM and six PM. And there is also a fire hydrant in front of Chick-fil-A, so there should be no cars parking, um, in that area. Um, and, and part of it, too, I think, is our frustration, um, and Lieutenant Segusio, you know, we'd love to have you come back and talk to the residents, um, because we do call in when cars are parked illegally, but we do get no response, um, and sometimes cars are parked there all day. Um, so, so I do want to make that, um, make that note. Um, but also I do support the traffic study, um, thank you, Kevin, for the update and relaying that information. Um, but I think I'd like to see.
Summarizing your remarks?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to see a use of time, because we still see lines, and we still cannot get in and out of the condominium, um, Queen Victoria, um, because of those lines.
Okay. Uh, right, so I think we've heard that local Chick-fil-A is being cooperative, we now have the no parking signs up, and there is a, uh, what I think didn't get mentioned, is there is a, uh, pilot program sign that asks people not to block the intersection, and there's a work order on that, I believe, right now. So we've seen a number of the mitigations we want to see, the motion before us is whether or not we also want to request a traffic study. Uh, I think we have as much information as we're gonna get, um, so I'm gonna call the vote. Uh, let's seek unanimous consent on this motion, uh, is anyone opposed or abstaining among the board? Hearing none, the motion passes, um, so I'll work with the neighborhood assistant on transmitting that motion. Uh, Kevin, thank you very much, Deborah, thank you very much, and thank you to Lindsay Chambers. I see a hand up from Nathan, uh, you're recognized at this time.
I guess, a dumb question, is it possible for, like, in the traffic study, is it possible to, like, in requesting it, that they also take a look at how often the driveway for, uh, Victoria, the Victoria Building is blocked? Because I know, you know, in, uh, otherwise, a, a traffic study really is just cars moving through the area. Um, so I was just wondering if it's possible, I guess, with all of our city folks here.
When I transmit it, I'll add that as a concern.
Okay.
Raised by a board member, all, uh, that's again, as opposed to official board concern. Okay, we're now going to move on to presentations, uh, we have Chris Fong of Trade Win Capital here to present on affordable housing development in the district, uh, Chris, thank you for sitting through some, uh, very lively discussions. So if you want to sit there or stand either way, we're gonna move the mic onto this chair. Uh, any technical lines?
I try to share my screen, too.
Yeah, I'll take you, be fine. Okay, perfect, um, good evening, everyone, my name is Chris Fong, I'm super excited to be here to present on a new affordable housing project for the Makiki area. I will start with introductions on myself and my team. Again, my name is Chris Fong, and I work for Trade Win Capital, um, and actually, here with me are some other members of my team, I have Bob Rule in the back with a blue mite shirt, Ken Walter, he's on my team, um, and some other, uh, folks, Chloe Robinson from Stanford Car, Nick, Nick Watchey, um, sent apart of that way, but uh, again, my name is Chris Fong, so I work at Trade Win Capital, Trade Win is a local-based real estate firm, um, we invest in all types of real estate. Um, but on the housing side, one of our more notable projects was the development of Pito One South, um, in partnership with Marshall Hung, uh, those are the, the two towers that I have up here, um, uh, the old, old store advertiser building on South Street and Kapalani Boulevard, uh, workforce housing condos, um, and for this project, we're actually partnering with Stanford Car Development, um, Stanford Car Development, an award-winning development team, uh, based here locally, have developed over fifty-five hundred units in the state of Hawaii, um, true pioneers in the affordable housing space. Actually, these are two other projects, too, that you both might be familiar with, um, the one in the middle, Holly Quillo, uh, those are affordable rentals, right of process rate from Alamoana, um, on Peekwood, um, and then they also developed Holly Quilla Place, uh, another great project, affordable rentals in Kakao. Now I'm gonna introduce the project site, um, they have a thesis for affordable housing. So this is the site that we're pur- proposing to develop, uh, our project on, so it's at the intersection of Peekoi and Young Street, um, on the, uh, diamond side of Peekwood, and so the parcel on the left, which I'll call the, uh, Peekwood Parcel, twenty thousand square feet in land, it's currently vacant, but it used to house, um, the former Plumeria Hospital. And then the parcel on the right, which I'll call the Young Street Parcel, twelve thousand square feet land, uh, currently houses kind of your standard garden-style, um, walk-up apartment building, uh, bolted on the MX three, um, so business mix use for commercial and residential use. Um, and the history of the site is that we actually acquired it back in twenty seventeen. Um, now, at that time, the Peekwood Parcel, so the one on the left, is actually comforted by a brown lease. Um, and that lease termed out at the end of twenty twenty-three. So in twenty twenty-four, we are actually in a position to, you know, reimagine, um, the properties, um. And, and the thesis for housing stood up, stood out to us right off the bat, I mean, in, within the immediate area, we all know the area, right? You got Safeway Times on the Malca side. You got schools, we call Mountain Elementary, McKinney High School down the street, medical facilities, Strobe, Hydra permanent, permanentated, um, you know, discount stores, Geisel, Edfo, Walgreens, Zippies, a lot of these opened late at night, too. Um, so we really thought that this would be a great location to add, um, affordable housing. So I'd like to show this picture, so this is the, a picture of the Peekwood Parcel improvements, um, at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, so once we got, once that brown lease termed out, and we got those improvements back, they quickly slid into disrepair, so I'm sure some folks maybe caught their eye in the last couple of months. Um, but, you know, people took over the place, ripped out windows, ripped out doors, vandalized, um, um, so I share this just because in our minds, it's kind of a perfect candidate, um, for putting something to better and higher use. But actually, this, could you actually share your screen? Is that possible, could you log me out? I'm connected to my phone, so it's probably just a single connection. I can keep on the bug. Nonextended screen, though. Nonextended screen, so you're not hearing. You just have to drag it up. Perfect. Now, I was on the slide with the old Pequoy improvements. Yeah, okay, yeah, so now we'll introduce the actual project. So this is what we are going to develop at that new site. Can you make sure you're? Okay. I'll make sure that. So our project will have 247 units. Will stand about 23 stories, approximately 200 feet. Will include a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms. And it puts 245 parking stalls and a separate seven-story parking structure. Again, it is exclusive for renters and residents qualifying at the 60% AMI and below level. But a portion of the units will be dedicated to citizens at the 30% AMI and below. And for something like this, because we will be exceeding the height and density in the area, we'll be taking it through the city's 201H program. And when we talk about AMI rent, 60% AMI rents, I just have some example numbers on the bottom. So we just look at a one-bedroom. So one-bedroom rents a max rent of $1473 qualifying for a person at $63,000 annually. That's gross rents, including utilities, and 30% rents would just be, you know, essentially half of that. My next slide. So I like to show this, because, you know, when we talk about height and density in the area, this project is actually consistent with existing towers. So this is looking in the Makai direction, you know, two blocks away, you have Holly Quillele, that blue and kind of gray building down the street. That's 20 stories as well, so standing approximately 200 feet. In the next slide. Looking in the Malca direction, the blue and white building two blocks away is 1212 Canal Street, also 20 stories, so standing approximately 200 feet. So, you know, our building, we were thoughtful in what we thought was the appropriate height and density, and we thought that this was consistent with what's already in the neighborhood. My next slide. So this is a snapshot of the ground floor. And so we tried to be really thoughtful in how we designed the ground floor of the building to be considerate of the Pequoy intersection. So a couple of things I'll point out, so ingress egress into the building is as far off of that Pequoy intersection as possible. So it's in the bottom right-hand corner, so that's off of Young Street. The other thing is, too, you can tell from the pictures, but the parking is in a separate parking structure on, next to the residential podium. So what that means is coming up Pequoy, which is a one-way street, you don't see a parking structure right off the bat, right? The parking structure is tucked off to the side, kind of hidden along Young Street. And then lastly, and what I think is super exciting, is the big front yard area. So we've designed this building to live within a 22-foot setback off of Pequoy Street. And the reason for that setback is because Pequoy, and it was actually mentioned earlier, there is a road widening setback on Pequoy, the city and county ever wanted to expand Pequoy. And I think for us, you know, a lot of developers might try and approach on that, but I think for us, it's really important to live within that, because it created this nice open lawn area. And if you flip to the next page, this is kind of what I mean, right? So a nice open street yard area, a nice streetscape for residents, pedestrians, and vehicular travelers. And, you know, I heard a comment earlier about how in this area, you know, green spaces are just being removed. This is actually a scenario where we're adding green spaces to a lot that didn't have any before. Next slide. This is a snapshot of our typical floor plate, floors eight through 23. So once you clear the parking structure, I said it earlier, but I do wanna emphasize, it is a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms. And over 50% of the units are in that two- to three-bedroom mix, so really serving families. And, you know, this unit mix is actually kind of modeled after Holly Quilla Place, which is Stanford Cars, other development in Kakaako, affordable rentals with the three bedrooms. And those guys will tell you, I mean, that Sensa building was built 10 years ago. It has had zero effective occupancy since the day it was built. So we know it's a proven mix, and it kind of proves it a man for larger and family units.
We're in about nine minutes, or just hit eight and dot please, we need to sync slides right here.
Okay, so I have 30 seconds?
Of course, you have another minute.
Okay, okay, perfect. Next slide. This just shows it up close of some of the units, design them to be efficient but sufficient. So we have studios and one-bedrooms on the tops, and two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms on the bottom. Next slide. And then lastly, I'll just end on a high-level timeline. So this month and last month was really dedicated to community outreach. And that included notifying the current residents on the Young Street Parcel apartments and the neighboring businesses. Then, of course, I'm here tonight presenting to the Makiki Neighborhood Board. Next week, I'll be at the Alamo on the Neighborhood Board. You know, in mid-May, we'll intend to submit an application to the, for our 201H entitlements through the, through DPP. And, you know, that process does include two hearings at the city and county at a minimum, with the zoning committee and the full city council. Apply for building permits in beginning of 2025. We'll be applying for funds from HHFDC in February of 2025, hopefully winning an award in the summer of 2025, breaking ground in 2026, project completion in 2028. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Appreciate that. I have a question for the board at this time. I'm trying to keep them to one minute, as we did before. I will say, if the question didn't answer all the line, I'm sure you'll share, Chris will share his contact information. Try to keep the question, I think, that are most public about. All right, open to the board. I'm gonna go to Nell first.
Thank you, Charos, and thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the thought process of the community and making it affordable family housing. My question is, how long-term is this gonna actually be affordable housing rentals for the community? And it's not, how do we know that it's not gonna go to an increased private sector in the long run?
No, thanks for that. So we will, as part of the type of funding we're gonna be using, which is low-income housing tax credits, we'll take it through the HHFDC to apply for these funds. And as part of that process, we'll be obligating the building to a minimum of, I believe, it's 65 years of affordability. So a super long time, so. I don't know when this will, we'll see, we're around when this building theoretically, that affordability carry would lapse, but it is a long time. Yeah, no, I'm glad you asked that. The short answer is yes. Yeah, so we were really mindful of that, right? That we were, part of our project included an existing apartment unit. And I didn't really note it earlier, but in terms of unit count, there were 20 units. And I think it equates to roughly 30 residents, and we'll be replacing this year with 247 units, right? But to your question, yeah, one of the things that we gave notice to the residents were that we intend to lease these units on a first-hand per sir, and so there's a way that we can put them in a position to be first in that list of these.
I'm gonna check on the question briefly. So for the other residents, the secondary car that they're gonna be knocking down, have you let the door down yet? And what sort of support are you offering to help the patients? For a lot of rent, are the people, I mean, to be very soon, that means they have disabled first and last in this range.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we have notified the residents, and the way we actually did it was one weekend, our team just went down in person and knocked every single door. So they, you know, we were able to meet them face-to-face. We had a letter kind of giving them the news for those that weren't there. And what we did was, we obviously told them of their plans, of our plans to redevelop the site. We told them that we wouldn't be extending leases past January of 2025. Also, no, all of the tenants, none of them had leases willing beyond the end of the year. And we gave them our contact. We said, you know, reach out to us, we'd love to hear from you. And we gave that notice about two weeks ago, and so at this time, we're still kind of, you know, communicating with them, and we're kind of letting them reach out to us. And so I imagine that's gonna be an ongoing dialogue, but it's one that we're having.
Any other questions to the board at this time? I see four in standup.
Yeah, I wondered if you would ever consider building a small playground equipment in that lawn space, so that, because there is no park that's easy walking distance for young children in that area. Just, it's difficult to find places for kids to play in the urban form, so it's just a thought.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. I haven't thought of that personally, and so that's great feedback, and we'll definitely think about it as we go through the design phase.
I will open up my hands from the, I'm like at this time. If anyone like sneakers, if you were, please come on to release them. Oh, yes.
Paul Clank? Is there a website for this, is there a website for this development that can be put in the notes?
Not yet. Yeah, not yet. You know, eventually there would be, but we're just, we're a little earlier on than that stage. But, you know, once it does, because that'll probably come in at the time while we're looking to lease, right? That's something that I think we wanna put out to the community for sure.
I'll pick someone up. Uh, I think maybe, to be, uh, for checks. But, uh, so my concern is that you're gonna go above, being heightened. And it just seems like everybody seems to be treating it up higher and higher. And why not just stay at the limit instead of going up the extra story? And try to be burning with, you know, the regulations, so that it goes to the people happy. You're gonna have some people have some concerns about it going above, and then the next people come up, you know, say, hey, I'm gonna go two feet or two feet or four is high, but it just keeps on, you see Kakaako, and the whole light of ocean just disappeared. And now it's just starting to be, you know, like, you know, shaded, you know, it's almost like, of course, a big city, but they're a little bit out for it, but yet you want to still go higher. And would it be better for the communities to stay within their rights? And just be, you know, happy with, you know, what we have.
Yeah, sure. So I mean, I mean, I think our position is, we just need the housing and the affordable housing. You know, I think, like, when you cite other scenarios where developers are crossing passive density, a lot of the times, that might incorporate more great housing. But, you know, here we're building passive, you know, the existing zoning only provide more affordable housing.
It's usually, you know. But are you able to make sure you're getting the parts out on inspection? Especially, so welcome, we're just gonna draw you the money. Do you have extra parts?
Yeah, I can give you my contact.
All right. Okay, Nathan, you're gonna be the last one.
I was gonna say, to counterbalance the, I guess, sentiment against high-rise housing, I am strongly in favor of such housing, because we need to utilize our space to provide more affordable housing. In addition, I mean, one of our major complaints for the area is parking. And there's 247 units, and there's 245 spaces of parking, and it goes into a stretch of street that is otherwise fairly underutilized. So in terms of, like, doing due diligence for making sure our car usage is low, you know, does not add too much to the area, I think they've done a fantastic job. Really, thank you very much for, yeah, due diligence. It looks great.
Okay, so we're gonna have to get that up there, because that's what we're always, like, officials, one minute reports each. Chris, thank you very much for your time on this one. Please do stay in touch, and please, you know, hear about our concerns, and please do call up with us, people can be the time to come out here.
Yeah, thank you, Ru.
All right, so we're gonna move on now to Governor Joss Reed, Representative. Okay.
I am, I am here, sorry about that.
I'm so sorry, I'm gonna have to keep you for about 90 seconds, I'm sorry.
It's not a problem. I will submit the governor's newsletter online. And I just wanted to remind everybody that the H1 westbound repavement, resurfacing is continuing. So come Sunday, this Sunday through Friday, the H1 westbound from University to Alexander will be shut down from 8, let's see, is it? Yeah, it's gonna be 8:30 to 5:00 AM. So just keep that in mind if you're traveling to get back home. And then the following week, it'll shut down again, and I'll put some information into the chatroom as well. So, and then also, following up, last meeting, we discussed, somebody brought up some overgrowth up on Round Top Drive, and was waiting for to receive the locations of where the overgrowth is. And this afternoon, we did receive a letter from Senator Fukunaga that provided some information on where those locations are. So I'll pass that on to DLNR, and we'll be looking into that. And that's it. I'll take any questions.
I'm going to unfortunately have to not enable us to take questions. I encourage. If you have orders for Russell, very sorry.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Fukunaga. Sorry, there were a bunch of reports, quite some quick.
So if there's any questions, but I'm not gonna take them back. I know you're on there with time.
Well, we have the 90 seconds now, thanks to you. So we'll give you one or two. So if you wanna wait for a second, you have any more questions at this time, please go ahead.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, it's the part where they're, it's for, they're just trying to show condo owners, again, by condo, the main school has doubled the rest of years, and we're told it's gonna evolve to the tires, new state law, requiring all the certain principal.
The issue is not so much the reserve requirements. This year, we have just, and we need to popularize the issue, which talk about the insurance crisis which occurs, hurricane insurance, and for condos and aging structures, a lot of the big shift is because for those buildings that are subject to the SARS threat ordinance, it can file for our safety violation at the end of 2020. There's something I can tell you. I think the insurance is automatically raised to three months. So that's what we ask insurance officials, which are asking, what we're looking to achieve for condos now, is something that would be sensitive to the needs of residents who have already tried to invest, to upgrade their first aid. Requirements are now cut in between financing, insurance, and other kinds of challenges. So we're gonna have to get the signal now. But now we live with insurance and the storms. So hopefully, we'll help with each other in this.
So that's gonna be it for the second. Thank you so much, Senator, for your report. We're gonna move on now. Representative Bella Alvaladi. I did hear from Representative Angel Eric, he had to leave a little bit earlier, his representative Scotty Shimoda. His representative, Scotty Shimoda. Hearing none, we're going to move on to community reports. We're a punchball of vibrant security launch. Do we have a report? Johnson. No, that's a little later, but next up, the Waukun Metropolitan Planning Organization.
And I'm Tommy. Then in their reading, they're innovating. They stopped doing paddock, they're doing sand backs of bike. Move inside. That's it. They're putting sand and gravel. Catalyze field. That's, I'll be kind of, that's the best.
They ended up getting any questions for it. Hearing none, now we're going to move on to resident community concern. Is the sunshine law concerns agenda must be rejected from the former action taken? Help would be brought on, just please come up. Would you mind introducing yourself again, Eric?
Okay, my name is Mr. Chong. I'm here to request the Makiki Board for help. With the Peaky Toy Shelter, 1506 Peopleport Street, managed by housing solution incorporated. We know it was contacting members of their board, city executives. They've had more than five different surrounding buildings playing a role on activities that have been offered. Earlier, asked the police representative here in Singapore, I'm going to fly this through down there. He said, that would be fantastic. Another board agent told me, he asked the same thing. The police, what they did, he said, that would be great, please have the contract. The people managing this housing solutions incorporating, they just say, there's nothing to see here. We think it's okay. We don't want to keep them watching. We know from speaking, they have onsite managed housing solutions incorporated. We insist, nothing will see here, they're invited. And he's not with each clean use, he's the news center. Lots of calls there all night, all day. The final thing having to do is come before you can ask, please put this on your agenda. All we're asking for is a private security partner, not possibly any contractor has to pay. And so it's getting a reasonable way forward. However, this doesn't happen. We're going to consort with people from the neighborhood. They were going to sue the city of County. Sue housing solutions incorporated. Like this, considering of the agenda, but next point, please have a higher private security.
Thank you very much. I hope I'm exactly the direction yet, but I'm going to follow up on this, because he needs that. Thank you very much for your memory. Okay, any other community comments? Yes, please go ahead. If you're going to speak to them though, so they can hear it without still. All right, just go ahead.
It's terrific. So as I mentioned earlier, we've been in Peaky for 20 something years on Greve Street. And with this, they just put in the, just kind of, what is affordable? You know, who's they're putting in there affordable? Now they're looking at putting another, they just bought another property from what I understood on Greve Street, 1044. And they were looking, and from what I heard, it was the same owner looking at putting another portable unit there. There's no parking, units have been on the market to rent for five, six months now. They still have filled up 26 units. Now they're putting in people that are, you know, at the section eight or even lower. And I heard that they're putting in some people from the Canoe Hospital. Would be people there. And if you actually, I have some video of some of the issues that are going on with that, well, with that building. And it's, it's, I can't see them doing another affordable unit there in the same street, you know, just a few houses away. So I wanted to make sure that people are aware. If that's going to happen, we should take a look at that. Because when they built that, or the street was, they didn't mention it to any of us. They didn't mention that they were going to build affordable units. They didn't come to the board, they went ahead and, you know, sidelined all the stuff. And the money's not working. Okay, now we're going to put this up there. Oh, yeah, I get it, affordable units, everybody wants affordable units. But they built these substandard units. They can't even afford, you know, put a cap for like 15, 16 hundred for a studio. They don't want to live in these 270.
Some are extra, no, it's for us or any of those.
I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that they built these units, not letting us know at the board. And then some standard units, we should be looking at, you know, making sure that the desirable, not desirable units that people should be ready, you know, looking at that.
Very much, Richard. I see Karen's hand up. We are at 8:20, which is officially 30 HFT hour. Please go ahead, Karen.
I'm sorry, my daughter wanted to give a community concern. Is she, can she do it real fast?
Yes, she's welcome.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kaya, the vice president.
For everyone here, Kaya turned 10, just a couple of days ago. So real grateful, let's wish her happy birthday. Happy birthday, God. All right, now please.
Okay, hi.
Speak loudly.
Hi, I'm Kaya, the vice president at Queen Kahumanu Elementary School. And I want to talk about how some of my student council members and some of the students are worried about the homeless people on Baratania Street on the sidewalk right in front of Walgreens. I believe, yeah. So we took the panorama survey, which is like an SEL survey that you talked about how you feel when there's different questions. And one of the main questions was, do you feel safe at school? And at one of our student council meetings, our principal came and we talked about this question. And a lot of the discussion was actually about some of the homeless people outside our school. Our school is very easy to get in. It's an open campus. It gets pretty, it's only three feet tall, so it's easy to get in. And one student in student council, who has RTI, when she walks to RTI, she hears screaming from the people. And then just stuff that kind of scares her. And our principal, our awesome principal, Ms. Hall, has even written a letter to the legislature, legislature, I believe. And I haven't written back to her.
All right, I'm going to summarize her story, be less her help action.
So he's asking, what do you want the board to do? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I was wondering if maybe the board could have more police officers or people with authority around that area? Because that's not like just the only place that I see a lot of homeless people. A lot of people who walk to school, there's a lot of homeless people. Because we're kind of in the middle. Our school is right in between Peaky Toy, Baratania, Pensacola, and Kenau Street. So I was just wondering if maybe we could have more police officers or other things around there to, like, enforce stuff. And I don't like antique people off property as needed.
So, all right, next meeting, I will be sure to bring this up for HPD and the board and share your concerns. Thank you so much for taking the time to come talk to me.
Thank you.
So I'm going to close out three minutes. Okay, we have one more, yes, please go ahead.
Make sure, make sure.
Hello, everyone. I'm the resident of Peaky. My name's Brendan Schultz. So we have an election coming up this August, May, and November. And I'm going to be one of your options on the ballot, of course, in the council. But I have to talk afterwards. I understand we're trying to wrap things up right now, so. Just be nice to me.
Everybody. Okay, we're going to now move on to state county, like official reports. We get an email from the mayor's representative, the deputy mayor giving the mayor's meeting. It is in Red Hill Drive. Moving on, state council member Kelvin Say. I am very sorry to try to, the bold stuff we threw your way to the city to try to keep you there 90 seconds. I apologize.
I'm very pleased. Issues of the month, but generally the existence of Dallas Drive, we do the road, we did something on passenger screen. Of course, repeat the lines of T M O Street from all of Bonneville to One Avenue, all of them are faded. Clear the fade over 1306 across the street that runs through the whole of Pensacola. Helping to do the homeless individuals to name a camp right next to Free Park Elementary School. A key concerns in regards to little three me that we talked about. And I'll be happy to answer your questions, if those they have at this point in time.
Thank you. Make time for one question, four questions at this time. Go ahead, Richard.
In the city, make us a promise that now abandoned property with, that property is how it is. This is simply right to walk and really tell us when evil hell is still. It's a shitty drive.
If all is considered for the general public, it was here. Like, it's supposed to be all of this, but this, this, this property, it's going to be. But I've been in office now, I've been asked, people got it for you. I don't know how long it's going to take, but I just made the request to update. Well, for non judicial foreclosure, rather than judicial foreclosure, which is taking up a lot of time and delays. That's it. Yeah, I'm sorry, but maybe that's the end of the year, up until seven here.
See, I suppose we express it.
All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have anyone from council member Tyler De Santos Tam's office? Yes, Robin is here. You've sit through 90 minutes of our meeting. Do you have an update for us?
No problem at all. It's always a pleasure. Okay, so really quickly, there was a request given to our office at 1027 Prospect Street to investigate excessive noise on behalf of chickens, feral, feral chickens. And HPD officers went by the property, found no excessive noise emitted from the property at the time in which they passed by the property. But they said that they will monitor the area and take appropriate enforcement action when a violation occurs. Do, 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 do. I know it's outside of our area, but our office is conducting a park cleanup on Saturday, May 18th at Fern Community Park. If you would like to, to join us, sign up is on our newsletter, which I've included in the chat. And finally, our office wanted to give a thank you and appreciation for this board's input on the game rooms legislation our office introduced. I am, the legislation has since been postponed, but in the next month or so, we will consider various amendments that can be made to, to further improve the bills. But thank you. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Robin. We don't all have time for questions from the board. I apologize. We're going to move on now to board business, appointing a board representative for the Community Representation Initiative meetings for Red Hill. There are community inputs. It could be very good to have someone who's informed on the issue as we're one of the first boards that brought together a big meeting on this topic. I was approached by Janelle requesting to be appointed. Janelle, can you give us just 15 seconds on why we should consider appointing you to this board? I should be clear, it's not appointment to the board, but someone who could represent us at the meetings. Janelle's not here. Okay. We'll leave that then. We're going to move on then to motion to establish new committees, designate chairs, and add members. We have one new interested member in, in joining, and that is Skylar. Skylar is here, Skylar Namanek, interested in the homelessness committee. So I, as chair, formal meeting, I'm going to appoint unless there is any opposition to this. Hearing none, welcome to the board, to the committee. Thank you so much. We do have approval of regular meeting minutes. Chair's recommendation is to defer this to the next month. You can always do two minutes. Is there any opposition to that? Hearing none, I should say the regular meeting of this board will be conducted again on May 16th, 2024, 6:00 PM. There is a typo in the meeting agenda. Broadcast of this meeting can be viewed on ALELO Focus 49 at 90 AM on the first Friday of the month and again on the first and third Sunday at 3:00 PM. For social media, you can follow us on facebook.com/makikinb. And we will be attempting to post this as a calendar event on Nextdoor in the future. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Any opposition? They're moved. We are adjourned, 8:29 PM.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.